Morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I get to be the phone guy?
Yes, please.
Calling out?
Since he's not responding to my email.
Can we go out of this room and call him on the phone versus calling him publicly in front of everybody? It'll be nicer.
I'll just say, "Call."
Call on the phone?
Call on the phone.
Okay. 911 first.
Morning.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioner Bradshaw. Are you ready for our morning meeting?
I'm ready.
All righty. It is.
How are we all doing?
We are good. It is nine o'clock and we're here for the regular scheduled business meeting and we will begin with our invocation.
Heavenly Father, I thank you that when it goes well with the righteous, the city rejoices. And when the wicked perish, there is jubilation. By the blessing of the right upright, the city is exalted, but it is overthrown by the mouth of the wicked. He who is devoid of wisdom despises his neighbor, but a man of understanding holds his peace. Father, I thank you that from the words of Proverbs, we can be righteous people, people who think rightly and do rightly. And I pray, God, that our county, that the leadership of this county, that those who run and serve this amazing community would walk rightly. God, they would live righteously and that they would choose right things. And God, I pray that you give us your heart for this county and give us your mind for this county and that your blessings would flow upon this beautiful place. We love you, God. We praise you. We ask for your blessing. We ask for wisdom in this season, that what happens right here in our home would honor you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please follow in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We've got some rules. So our next option is to adopt the order of agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the order of agenda.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion from the community? All right. Roll call vote.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
All right. So Commissioner Bradshaw, would you rather that Commissioner Corn make the motion so that you can second them since you're on the phone? How would you like to do that?
We didn't hear you.
Commissioner Bradshaw, can you hear?
How about now?
There we go.
Yeah, that's better. Would you rather Commissioner Corn make the motions and use second?
If he makes the motions, I'll just second.
All right. Thank you. And then, Elisa, there was a request from the community that you alternate who you call for first in your vote so that it goes between the three. And, all right. Next item.
My third job much harder.
I know, but the person, the comment that they're asking for has been, has come before our board a couple of times, so it's okay to go back and forth. So our next item is our consent agenda. We have quite a lot of money on here, so in anticipation of that request, we've got sheriff has mobile radios, fifteen thousand seventy-two and forty-five cents. Frontline communication for a new vehicle, approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-three, actually exactly that. I don't know why I said approximately. Then frontline communication for parts and labor for the same vehicle, six thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And I think with that one, it's when sheriff purchases a vehicle, then he has to pay to put all of the items on it, so it's not coming ready to go. Then we have risk. Bonner County Sheriff's Office versus a deer, and we lost to the tune of eight thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. And then Northwest Auto Body has a road and bridge vehicle repair from a falling tree. And Christian, I thought was in this room. Okay. I had a, I have a question then for auditing, only because it's in the consent agenda, but then he has an actual item to vote on it later. And so I don't understand why there's actually a document for us to sign. So it's in two different spots. And I had a question of was this on a property where there was a claim for it or not?
Um, where did you see it as a decision item?
It is, let me go back. He's got a road and bridge one for the.
Oh, I think it's a road and bridge.
Yeah, it's the, the last one is a road and bridge issue. And I couldn't tell unless he was just adding it to it. Or is it just like a for information, do you think?
I have no idea. It looks like the only thing Risk has on there is a S or HSI.
Okay. So we won't look at it twice then? Okay. So those are our high-ticket items. So any comment from the public? I'll wait for Doug. All right. I think we're good then.
It's not a question.
Sure.
And I, and I didn't catch it till just recently, otherwise I would have sent it out yesterday. And I wish Christian was here to possibly answer it. But on the Northwest Auto Body claim here, they're showing two headlights for sheriff's rig that, that got hit with, by the deer. And the headlights are like eleven hundred dollars apiece. And I noticed that they're aftermarket headlights instead of even OEM. So it just kind of raises a concern when you can go on eBay or something and find a set of headlights for three hundred dollars. So.
These are, these are components from the year 2021 forward. Those are component headlights. They do not have bulbs. You have to replace the bulb headlights. You can't get those on eBay.
Really? Okay.
What the heck are headlights?
And maybe sheriff hold, they have a, in their maintenance area, they have an area of where they're doing maintenance, but they try to do as many supplies as they can in bulk to address kind of that concern. But unfortunately, we lose to the deer. And I don't think anybody got the deer.
The newer cars are killing us, huh?
Yes.
Two thousand dollars there, two headlights. Thank you.
That's questionable.
All right.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion based on the information before us. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing, hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Our next item is our clerk's office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, public. Jessica Stephanie, Bonner County Comptroller, for the record. I am bringing before you five items in total, four claims, so two for '24 and two for fiscal year '25. We'll start with fiscal year '24, batch number 28, totaling three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents for your approval.
All righty. Any comment from the public on this one?
Yes.
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Wait, wait. Doug raised his hand. Doug, go ahead.
Find in my spot here. Thank you. This is Doug Patterson, county resident. So these, these claims, the large ones, could you tell us what they are so that we would, we would know where our money claims are going?
Yep. It looks about like eighty-five thousand in 911 Tech, thirty-five thousand for Sandpoint Airport, a hundred and seventy-six thousand for garbage. I'm looking, I think those are the big ones. Everything else is kind of.
Those are, those are the big ones in that pile. Any other questions, Doug?
Thank, thank you. When you get down to the, to the 25 claims, please the same, the same info.
Yep. All right. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the payment of the FY '24 claims in batch number 28 totaling three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Corn? Yes.
Our next item from the clerk.
Fiscal year '24 EMS claims, batch number 28 totaling five thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents for your approval.
Doug, you don't, do you have a question on the EMS packet?
It's low enough that, that it seems like it's, you know, the usual as usual.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment of the FY '24 EMS claims in batch number 28 totaling five thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I second it.
All right. Any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote. Yes.
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 All righty. Batch three?
Okay. Fiscal year '25 claims, batch number three totaling three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars and two cents for your approval.
All right. He wants read out the large ones on this one.
And then, so we have 911 Tech at twelve thousand. Solid waste repairs, fourteen thousand.
On this one, it's not like we're having single ones that are really high, Doug. It's just a lot of them.
Yep. Motorola, seventy-two thousand. Road and bridge guardrails, ninety-two thousand. Looks like more auto repairs, twenty-one thousand. And insurance, sixty-three thousand. That's all the big ones.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment of the FY '25 claims in batch number three totaling three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars and two cents.
I second it.
Any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have 20, fiscal year '25 EMS claims, batch number three totaling six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents for your approval.
Any comment from the public? Doug, there's not, these ones are in their usual low level for the EMS bills. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment of the FY '25 EMS claims in batch number three totaling six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
I second it.
Any discussion from the board?
None.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Corn? Yes.
Okay.
And then finally, I have the renewal of fiscal year '24, '25 audit agreement with Zygarde and Associates.
All right. On this one, I, I don't have an issue with it now that I've seen it, but when you look at their comments about Gatsby, is the clerk's office agreeable to also moving in that direction kind of organizationally as well? We had talked about it individually. Okay. No worries. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County renewed the audit agreement with Zygarde, John and Associates, PLLC, to complete the 2024 external audit for the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars.
I second it.
All right. Any discussion from the board?
None.
For clarification, for people that asked, this is the first renewal with this company. They've only audited us one time. Roll call vote.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Corn? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Lupton.
Good morning, Teddy Lupton, for the record. Born and raised Bonner County resident. My first item I have on the agenda is Facilities and Engineering is requesting to move one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and ninety-six cents from capital construction line item 001189480, general fund, from FY 2024 to capital construction line item 001189480 FY 2025. The reason for the carryover, carryover is to fund outstanding and/or unanticipated invoices for the EMS Station One complex project.
So I have some questions on this one. We talked about can we use these funds to complete the walls instead of holding them in something that would be general, but we have the insulation in the walls, but there's a need to secure that? Are we going to move forward with something like that?
I have, I need to get some pricing and, and, yes, I'm moving forward with.
Looking at how to, because I don't want it to get sucked up in a different thing.
It's still going to remain in capital construction?
Well, I mean a different project of.
Right.
Because we've taken money saying that was extra out of that. That's what the community said.
And I do know that I have an outstanding invoice for First Net for the elevator dialer.
Okay.
And the privacy tinting for tent works that was just done. So I know those two are out there, so it's about thirty-eight hundred dollars right now.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before me, I move that the county approved Resolution 24-81 to move one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, ninety-six cents from 00118/9480 FY 2024 to 00118/9480 FY 2025 for the carryover of the EMS Station One office project.
I would second that.
There's a first and a second. Is there any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Ms. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Next up.
My next item on the agenda is the Facilities Department is requesting permission to move forward with the proposed winter snow removal contract for Lipert excavation of pipeline to maintain the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center parking area for the winter of 2024, 2025. Attached along with the memo are the rates for sanding, deicing application, shoveling and removal of snow. This contract is the same as last year's pricing and would come out of budget 034108680. I do want to say there is one difference. The dump truck rental is ten dollars more this year than last year. Everything else is exactly the same.
I have a couple of questions. Did we seek other bids to see if this was the best? And then did we include other facilities that are in that general area that were responsible to snow remove for?
I emailed the sheriff's office. They, they normally do the same contract. It's in, the past has been all under facilities, but the movie, the money for snow removal, half of my budget line item was moved during budgeting to the sheriff's office so they can be in control of their own snow removal. And I have asked others if they are interested at all, and they are not.
Okay.
And Lipert has given exceptional, above-average service yearly.
No worries. It's always good to say, when we only present one, that we looked so that the community knows.
I always try to get our due diligence on that.
But, no worries.
No interest.
Did you have any questions?
Nope.
All right. Public comment. Mr. Kramer, your hand is up.
Yeah. Brandon Kramer. I'm a Bonner County resident. I'm curious as to why the, I don't know, the excavator and snow blower that was just purchased cannot be used to cover this contract or why a similar contract was not negotiated in lieu of that excavator that was purchased for the admin building.
I have two maintenance employees. We can't, we can't keep up and it's really very, very important for the sheriff's office to be clean and free of ice at all times.
I, then, my further comment would be is that if you can't keep up, then you should have not allocated and spent eighty grand of the county's money on equipment that you can't use because you can't keep up and instead contracted it, just like you're doing for the sheriff's department. That would be a better stewardship of our funds.
It will be used here as well as the new facility. It just, it will make it a little bit easier for the, the two gentlemen that I have. They've been spending in, in a bad winter several hours trying to keep up with snow and not being able to maintain our daily activities. So this will help them, the snow blower and skid steer.
So, and I think what, one of the things he's asking is was there an option for Lipert to do snow removal on the admin building in this building? I think that's a difference.
I've never really asked them if they would be interested in doing all the county facilities. I, that would be a lot to keep done up before the courthouse in here and the new building. They, we try to have those done before 6:00 AM. And I just feel the sheriff's office and the juvenile detention is more important and we can keep up with what's here in our backyard.
Okay.
Or is the, the skid steer and snow removal equipment, if you look at the lifespan of those, that works out very, very efficiently per year.
Can I ask you to do that?
Jessica Stephanie, comptroller. The other thing that we were in, like considering when we chose to purchase the snow blower and skid steer was that hiring a contractor for the new building, we would have had to have the snow trucked out of there. There's no place to store it there. And so that was a component for the decision, just so that everyone understands.
It was the dump truck is what the requirement was if we plowed it versus us moving it on our own. Was, I believe that was part of it.
Correct.
So, okay. Sheriff Wheeler has something to say.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Derek Whaley, for the record, I just want to say that a little problem has developed. On October 8th, I did receive a, an email from Teddy saying that the, I guess there was some action in the budget here, in the budget workshops, that the, that the money for snow removal was moved into the sheriff's office and there was going to be a separation from the contract. Well, checking with the clerk and the comptroller, that that money was never transferred. The money for maintenance of fifty thousand dollars that was, that was accounted last year was not transferred, so we're in the hole. And I, it's a, it's a problem that's going to have to be determined and solved by the Commissioners. This contract for the last several years by Lipert has been operated under the building's ground contract. The equipment is stored for the, for snow removal, both the juvenile detention and the sheriff's office, at the sheriff's complex, the equipment that they use to, to. I would ask the Commissioners consider tabling this and actually accepting and somehow funding the snow removal for this year. The original contract by Lipert was submitted on October 3rd and it was for Bonner County Jail Complex and juvenile detention with the same rates. At this point, we don't have any budget to enter an agreement ourselves with, with Lipert. And I think a solution to this would be somehow fund building and grounds and keep the, the contract as it has been in the last few years. They store the equipment, they have the equipment on our property because there's a lot more room than juvenile detention and somehow figure out what we're going to do next year.
If the money didn't move to your account, did it remain in facilities?
No.
Where is the money? What account is it in?
Not.
You're going to have.
You're going to have to use a microphone when we say it's not, because that sounds like missing.
I know. It's not, well, it's not that it's missing, but they, so we removed half of it from Teddy's budget, but the entry was never made on the sheriff's side to allocate that amount for the sheriff's department. So that allocation is gone.
So when we say we removed, do we need the clerk? Is he here?
He is down in elections.
Okay. If we removed it from Teddy's.
Correct.
How do we not have a paper trail of where we deposited?
No, it's not actual cash money.
No, I understand, but there should still be a record of what line item we're seeing it in, and we're saying it's not in the sheriff's and it's not in hers.
So one-sided transaction occurred. So last year during the budget process, the prior comptroller and I split duties when it came to the funds that we were messing with, right? Like I made changes in all of the general fund accounts, and she made changes in the justice fund accounts. And so somewhere in there, it was missed, and when we were reviewing the sheriff's budget, it was missed, that the $50,000 was not allocated to the sheriffs in that line item. So we underbudgeted for the sheriff's department for facilities and the snow contract. Teddy's budget, I adjusted as per the decisions that were made during budget, but the sheriff, that money was not allocated to the sheriff.
And in your answer, I did talk to Mitch, and she understands that it will be too separate, and it's still, everything's the same. You would just fill out, get your part approved, and I would get my part approved, and it's all, would also leave the contract.
We still don't have the money in the account. The money is the issue.
Yeah, I don't have money.
And so is the, so, so from my view, I need, this is a table to me. We need to find the money and then identify, because what I don't think is fair to either of these two departments is that we say, we recognize that there was a one-sided issue, now you two fight over the money. We can find and figure it out. So I don't want to do that. So I will step down from chair and make a motion that we tabled this and we bring it back, and then we work with all interested parties to identify. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Will we have an answer by next week? Okay, yes. Yep. All right, Alex.
Thank you, commissioners. Alex Fan, planning staff. Before you is a memorandum for a final plat, file number S0002-24, Noble Estates First Edition. Noble Estates First Edition is a subdivision of an unplotted parcel. The subdivision will divide the existing 59.94 acre parcel into 12 residential lots, ranging from 4.99 to 5 acres. The parcel is currently zoned rural five, and the subdivision meets the requirements of this zone. The property is located off Noble Lane, a privately owned and maintained road in Section 10, Township 59 North, Range 1 West, Blaute Meridian. The preliminary plat was approved by the hearing examiner on May 17th, 2024. The lots will be served by individual wells and individual septic systems, Northside Fire District and Northern Lights. The conditions of approval for this plat have been completed, and all notes and easements required by the plat approval are shown on the final plat.
So I have a comment, which is kind of approximate to this, but doesn't really, it's not going to change this outcome, is I think this is one of those examples, as we hear about water and septic issues and subdivisions, that people are wanting to know kind of the direction, planning and the county as a whole of with this kind of subdivision, should we have community wells, community instead of individual, because other areas throughout the state that have subdivisions at this number are kind of shifting to a community-based system instead of that many straws kind of down. But that, it's not specific to this, it's just one of those examples where, when I read it, I recognize it already basically happened, and we're just doing a final, but that's a question that a lot of people have been asking on how we're growing and developing. But any comment from the public?
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve this project, file number S0002-24, Noble Estates First Edition, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat as presented.
I second that.
All right, any discussion from the board?
None.
Roll call vote?
Yes. Yes ma'am.
Yes. All right, next up, we have Chief Lindsay, unless you're presenting for him.
I'm here.
Okay.
I apologize for not being in person. I've got.
It just says EMS, I didn't know who that was going to be.
Yeah, it's me. It's me. I got a couple of time-sensitive things I'm working on while I was waiting my turn. So I do appreciate, I see you, Janine, out there, appreciate you coming and supporting this exciting thing. So real quick, just a quick backstory, if it's okay, commissioners. We, the baby box, the Safe Haven baby box presentation that I'm going to ask for approval today, this started months and months and months ago with Janine coming up to me and asking me if this would be something that EMS would be interested in, participating in, potentially putting it on our new facility. At the time, I really didn't know a whole lot about it, so I started looking into it. Again, this has been a month, a many months-long project, which has now come to, thankfully, to fruition. So basically, a couple of, a couple of questions that came up when I sent it over to Christian and Risk, I'll go through those because I'm sure the public's going to have a couple of questions about this. So basically, the box, you know, is installed on the building, and this is one of those that can be accessed from either side. So basically, what happens is a mother, instead of what the Safe Haven laws in Idaho.
Chief Lindsay, can I pause you for a second?
Yep.
Commissioner Bradshaw, can you mute on your side? Because there's a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I hear that.
Thank you.
Okay. So real quick, when a mother, you know, abandons her child and puts the baby in the box, basically, you know, after the mother puts the baby in the box, then the alarm goes off at dispatch and lets them know that a child has been placed in the box. And again, there's, there's all sorts of alarms that go off, but basically, the main one needs to go to the dispatch center who lets us know, and then we obviously take the baby to the hospital. Law enforcement gets involved at that point. So real quick, one of the questions that came up was, is there periodic testing or scheduling to ensure that the alarms are consistently working? And that answer is yes. Before, when they're installing, they do seven days of testing on the alarms, and then the alarms are tested weekly once the box is installed. So that's the answer to that question. And then the other question that Risk had was, just in case there's an issue with the box, i.e., the temperature control doesn't work, or the alarms are out or something, is there a way that we can close the box so nobody can access it, i.e., a baby can't be put inside? And the answer to that is yes, we do have placarding that comes with it to say the box is closed, as well as we can lock that box out to keep anybody from accessing it. So those were the main questions that came from Risk. And then another question someone asked me was, you know, I think somebody was confused and thought Safe Haven laws in Idaho, that, you know, you could, the kids could be up to nine years old, and that's not the case. It's up to 30 days old.
It won't fit in the box.
If I could, I would put my 16-year-old in the box, but that. So yes, it's up to 30 days old. And then again, you know, any, you can walk up to any medically trained person, like an EMT, paramedic, you know, a nurse, doctor, whatever, and give them the baby, and then they basically have to take it at that point. So it's kind of cool when you start looking into these Safe Haven laws, but this is just one of those, it's a safe place for the baby to be able to put, and then once the baby is in the box and it alarms and EMS takes over, and then we, and then we take it from there. But it's a safe, it's a safe way for someone that's thinking of giving up their baby to be able to do it with anonymity associated with it. So that's pretty much all of my spill, other than presenting the memo, so I'll turn it back to the commissioners. Are we, are we opening up for public comment, or how would you like to do this?
Before we do public comment, can we just let Janine come up so that she can answer questions too? Because I, so it's a really good idea, and part of what, for me, you have to mitigate the risks, which includes if something negative happens and the box is connected to the county. And so one of my questions was, why would we put the box on the EMS station instead of inside the hospital, for example, in the nursing station box that people have in hospitals? Because one of, they are 24/7, someone is always there, and it's not always a healthy baby that gets put in that box. And it addresses not just tampering from animals or whatever, but even people, because they have to get triggered because they may not be there. Is that the safest location on our EMS station versus in a area that, because they are just going to transport the baby to the hospital? So why, what's the argument to put it on the county building versus attached to the hospital? Arguing that, yes, there's a, the anonymity is what you're looking for, but you can achieve that in the hospital while adding an additional line of protection for the baby that's getting put in the box. That was really a lot of where my concern is, is yes, you can say we're testing every week to make sure the box functions properly, but that's not necessarily means that it hasn't malfunctioned. And thinking of the best way to protect the infant, why not in a place? Because these are on fire stations, you're still potentially interacting, even with public that watches you walk up with a baby, and you turned around and you had no baby. So the safety of the baby was my question, and I did pose it to Chief Lindsay as, why not on the hospital versus on this building, especially with our temperatures that happen in Idaho?
So the box is climate-controlled, so that answers the question about, you know, our weather. But as we've looked at the different locations, the hospital's kind of a busy place. You've got people coming and going all the time, and what we're really looking for is that anonymity piece, that the, that it would be outside of a building that's not so frequented. When the door closes, the baby is safe inside. There's no way to open it from the outside. It's only opens from the inside after. So the baby's locked in, it's safe. The EMS is committing to five-minute response time. That's the commitment with the box. So they will be there onsite within five minutes. So if they were out on a call, they would commit to knowing they need to be back to the box in five minutes.
Is that something that you feel that you can manage with your call volume?
Uh.
And then add in the metrics of the need, because you're committing a resource. So it's not, there's not a dollar that gets passed, but using EMS for that function is a cost, even if you're not passing a dollar. And so we want to make sure it's the right thing for the county to be attached to. You can have good ideas, but we have to mitigate the risks of it. And that's what I really want.
Absolutely.
The community to hear that we've mitigated the risks and we've identified, but I also, there is a cost to the county in that it's a call volume cost to the county. So Chief Lindsay, what's your response?
So when it comes to the, the call volume, and us, and me being able to, you know, basically, you know, make some sort of scientific guess on, you know, where our truck will be when the baby's dropped off, that's not going to happen. And this is going to be one of those so infrequent events, if it ever happens in my lifetime, that, you know, who knows where the crew is when, when that happens? However, with the, with the way that Station One is set up, which is our, the new facility, that truck usually is on, if it's on calls, it's usually on city calls, so that's, that's one of those things that, you know, those are calls that are cleared up quickly. There's usually a supervisor 24/7 here. He very infrequently is on calls, he's mainly doing the paperwork and that sort of thing. So usually, the station is staffed pretty consistently. There's somebody here around the clock, whether it's daytime and admin staffs here, or, so again, this is going to be such an infrequent thing, if it even ever occurs, that, you know, it'd be hard to say what's going on at the time. But again, you know, we come back to the, the statement that I made, I think I sent this in the email, I can't remember Asia, but when, right now, anyone in the state of Idaho can surrender their child at any time to this EMS facility. So this just keeps someone from just, you know, basically having to walk in and go through the, you know, the, having to hand the child over with the box on the outside, they can do this, it can be safe, they don't have to, you know, they can keep anonymity as we keep describing. But again, this, if the box were not here, that doesn't keep the baby from showing up. Hopefully that makes sense, so.
It does make sense. That's why I have the question, that's why I have the question, only because it's actually, from a risk perspective, the fact that it is all so infrequent actually increases your risk, because you don't have the habit, the practice of doing something. And the, the issue still is solved by EMS is there, they can receive the baby no time. So I'm not saying what my vote is, I'm just saying that's, that's my concern, is the actual infrequency of it potentially happening. But then when it does happen, are we able to meet that need? And if you're saying someone is housed there 24/7, so you'd meet that expectation to where there's a safety net for a failure of the box, is what I'm hearing you say, because someone's there. So.
Right.
From that, in case it happens, I can come back to this tape.
Right, yes. And also, also the understanding is, as well, is we're also dealing with, when it comes to risk, in my job, when it comes to, you know, we, when we go out on calls, there's always a risk. There's a risk every time we go out on a call for that patient. So this baby would be just like any other patient that we take care of. We try to meet that need, we try to make sure that patient's taken care of every time, no matter who it is, no matter what the situation is. So I don't look at the baby box, hopefully I'm describing this correctly, but I don't look at the baby box any different than I do any other patient that we're called to take care of. So.
I agree, the difference is it's a call. This is a box, it's a drop-off box. And there is a difference in the drop-off box, because you're relying on technology to bridge the gap of the safety until we pick the baby up. So we need the box to be temperature-controlled. We need to make sure that it's, that the temperature it's set as in the device itself is compatible with what our coldest cold is, because if it did take the anticipated five minutes, we want to make sure we didn't contribute to a problem. Not all, yes, when you get a call, you don't know what you're going to walk in on, but you get a call, the baby is just in a box. That's what I want to make sure we're paying attention to. I don't want to take, I'm having the conversation because it's an unknown for the county, and there are risks, and I, I agree that it's likely that we won't use it, but if you're going to implement it, you must talk about the risks of using it, especially when you're tying it to the county and not to the hospital, with a guarantee that we're going to respond in five minutes. Because once that alarm triggers in five minutes, what if for some reason something happened and EMS had to go out on a call, and they're not sitting there, and it's longer than five minutes, but something happened to the baby? And this is where I'm going to turn to Christian on that one. Who holds the liability if we don't answer in five minutes, but we committed to, and there's a negative outcome for the kid? Does that come to the county's insurance? Or how does that work? So that, so that's, because I want to make sure I talked about every little thing before we vote. So Christian, what, what happens if there's a negative outcome? And, and it's verified that we couldn't respond in the five minutes that we're agreeing to?
Yeah, that could be a risk. I thought of another scenario too. What if something happened to the baby in birth, and it's a deceased baby? I don't know if the system can pick up on the status, so I could see that scenario happening too, where somebody has an emergency.
Well, you're going to my next question. My first question is the time. My next question is, what if you have a baby that's not alive placed in that box, and is the county responsible for investigating and paying for that investigation to address liability? That's my, that was going to be my second to you.
Oh, sorry about that. We think alike.
My first one is, what if it's shown that we didn't get to it in five minutes and there's something negative? Because people also can say they changed their mind, they want their baby back, something happened, and then we get involved in something.
Oh, by the way, this is Christian Jocelyn, risk manager for the record. But yeah, my, my take is that we take on potentially liability. In the grand scheme of things, if this helps, I think the whole purpose is, if a baby is more likely to be dropped off instead of aborted or abandoned somewhere else, then you save that baby. Of course, we're accepting liability compared to the second scenario, it wouldn't be our liability. And then your second question about changing their mind, I'll let her speak, but I think there's a thing on the website about that, that there's a safety thing. But yeah. But yeah, we, we do take on liability, even though it might save lives, because now we're establishing control.
And so what is the liability? So that would go on our, the county's general liability or would that go to the liability of EMS? Is it a liability that as their department, they're taking on by saying that they're agreeing to the time?
This is probably a commissioner question, but my understanding is it's all the same, it's our general liability.
So I don't want to use the, it's all taxpayer money. It's where, where does that taxpayer money get pulled from is the question. Because just like, for example, we can say, fine, it's EMS money, but we're not in control of some of the things that are over there. And so in this case, if something goes wrong with a safe haven box attached to the EMS building, is that an EMS claim or is it a general fund contingency claim?
Oh, I have a better answer than you then. What I meant by that was that right now, it's all the same policy, doesn't matter which department, it's all the same general liability. Now for workers' comp, that's carved out for EMS, but otherwise it's all the same. The only way EMS would have a fiscal responsibility right now is if they failed to follow our policy, didn't report an incident within the 24 hours, that type of thing. But under the current policy that the commissioner's control, the risk policy, it's all, all claims are the same fund, unless they don't comply with reporting, then it could be shared. And that's something in your power, you can always change and have it specific for each department. Right now it's all lumped in together.
Yeah, but when we do our assessments of who's causing leakage out of our budget, we look to which departments are causing that, that issue. And I guess that, that's where my question was coming from. So from an EMS perspective, they, they
So I got a question.
Go ahead.
In the unfortunate event that one is dropped off and EMS is on a call, is there any reason that Sandpoint Fire couldn't respond to the box?
So, I'm sorry, when the ba-
This is
Janine Shepherd, Bonner County and Executive Director at Life Choices Pregnancy Center. So I forgot the question.
He's, and I think it's on the inside. It's on the in, the box is on the inside and I think maybe it's an EMS because it can only be opened from the inside once it's dropped off. And so I think that's a Chief Lindsay.
Commissioner Bradshaw, would you-
If I can answer that question. I, I understand what Steve's saying. Again, we're, we're in the infancy stages of this. We haven't met with SHBB on, we haven't met with dispatch. There's a lot of things that we have to do in order to make this. And I'm, again, I'm optimistic that it's going to work, but if they get over here and they can't put it into the side of the building, or there's a lot of things that we have to go through before this is even a thing. So again, I, you know, I haven't sat down with Sandpoint Fire and come up with a response plan, I haven't sat down with dispatch on this. Again, there's a lot of things that have to be done, but you know, just, just kind of spitballing here, yes, we can set up a response plan to where Sandpoint PD is notified, Sandpoint Fire is notified, Sandpoint Fire can access our building 24/7 because there's a Knox key. There's, you know, a lot of ways that we can handle this to where it's not just incumbent on EMS to be the ones that handle the situation. Because I guarantee you, once the baby is dropped, it also becomes a law enforcement issue. So
Jeff, doesn't, when you, so when you place the baby in the box, the, okay, so there's a, the door is going to open, a 911 call will immediately go. The baby's placed in the box, a second 911 call will go. So within that 911 call, wouldn't everybody be called?
We're assuming no failure. That's my problem.
This is all based on, and again, this is all based on what's called response planning. So 91, the 911 center, so the folks over there, they build in who goes on what call. So if it, if they build a baby box call out to be, you know, this is who goes on this call, it's Sandpoint Fire, it's Bonner County EMS, it's Sandpoint PD, all of those agencies get, then, then anytime this happens, it's an automatic, they send those agencies. So again, this is something that, sitting down with dispatch, sitting down with Sandpoint PD, with Sandpoint Fire, with all these different folks and just saying, hey, if this happens, you guys are going to be on the call, or are you guys willing to be on the call, that kind of thing? This is all stuff that has to be done. So again, this is just, all we're asking for today is approval to start that, down that road.
So my, so I've got kind of two things is, we're talking about, we're going to trigger something. It's not a person making a phone call, which is in part, we don't have a baby box to see what this looks like. Why would we be entering into an agreement when part of the questions are answered with, we haven't worked out the discussions with like Sandpoint or dispatch of how it will actually look? Because we're being asked to agree to something without the, the platform fully built out. And that's what, I don't, I think it's a very good idea, but I also think we have an obligation to ensure that we've mitigated as much of the risk as we can for the county. Because this isn't a person that, it's not a person that when the box gets set in that someone's picking up a call. This is a device where part of my question would be, we have sometimes problems with cell reception here. What does that look like? I don't want, I don't feel for me that, the idea is good, but you're actually, this actual motion is asking us to enter into a lease and service agreement. And we haven't finished vetting out what the full, what everything looks like. And from a risk perspective, that's what I would like to see before we sign it, because the idea of what is being desired makes complete sense. I understand what you're trying to do. But I also should, in my opinion, sign something before we have said, we have a clear plan and we've identified the potential risk hole that we might fall in, and we've actually created a plan in case that happens. I can't do that because some of the questions are being answered with, we're in the infancy stage of moving forward for the idea. And I guess I would welcome any other commissioners' thought on it. That's, that's my question on it is, I, I like the idea, I've seen these elsewhere, it's just, we don't have all of those things checked off for us.
I have a question for Christian.
It's an excellent ideal. I think it should be implemented as quickly as feasible because it's possibility of a baby being at risk. And the sooner you get that implemented, the better. But we want to make sure that we've done our due diligence and that way it's, in the unfortunate event of some type of negative outcome, that we have explored all those possibilities, covered them all, and there was nothing else we could do. There's always a risk when somebody drops an infant off.
I got
Because they're usually not in that great of health anyway.
I got a question for Christian. My question is almost on the opposite side of the spectrum. What liabilities are the county put into if we don't accept this? And there's a baby left at the side door or whatever, the EMS station in the middle of January, February, and it freezes to death because we chose not to do this? When it's, when it's presented to us that we could have done this and we could have saved that baby's life?
That's a great question, especially, I'm just speculating here, not thinking about it, but um, if there's a camera and people assume that the camera would catch that kind of activity, or somehow they think they're passing off the infant to one of our personnel and miscommunication gets missed somehow, that's, that's an equal. And that's the thing, the
I'm going to pause you, because that's not, that's not how the drop the baby off rules work now. We have this rule already in existence in Idaho. So we're not liable for somebody abandoning the baby on a doorstep and a negative outcome. We're liable when if I hand the baby to Chief Lindsay and he drops the baby on the doorstep, then we have a problem because we didn't follow the process. But we don't obtain liability for not having a safe haven box because Chief Lindsay's office and personnel and law enforcement and any medical professional, you can walk up and hand a baby to. The person is actually liable for abandoning the baby on the sidewalk in the example that Commissioner Corn gave. We are not liable for not having a safe haven box, which is, and I give that to, to twist it, because that's the risk question I'm asking. Once we get the box, then we are responsible for the box. And so we are adding a liability, which is why I'm asking the risk questions of it. Because you can always hand a baby over to anybody in, in those titles in our state.
If I may, can I ask two questions for our, our guest? First was the changing the mind thing that I think Stephen mentioned.
Janine, why don't you stand there that way? You can always have the microphone, you don't have to push your leg.
And the second one, the weekly test, is it just a digital test or does somebody physically open the box and put a weight in there to go, how's the weekly test look?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. Do you know that, Jeff?
I do. The, the weekly test is activating the system. So basically opening the door, shutting it, going through the motions of like we would be dropping a baby and that, and that has to be tested weekly.
And the second question is, if somebody changes their mind, that came up, I think from Steve.
Yeah, so they, the parent that drops the baby has 30 days in order to come back and express that they want the baby back. And within that time, there would be questioning of the parent, making sure that they're, you know, DNA testing, the whole bit to make sure it's, not only that it's the parent, but also that it's a safe situation. It could be, I mean, a mom's in crisis and she does something rashly and she wants the baby back and she has 30 days.
Commissioner Corn, did you have anything further?
No, I think I'm good to go. Thank you.
So we did question-
I just wanted to add one comment, because the public probably doesn't know that the box is being paid for by Life Choices Pregnancy Center donors. The maintenance on the box will be paid, the alarm system is all paid by generous donations.
No worries. So we did our discussion to ask questions as it was presented, so now we'll open up for public comment. And I see Citizen 926.
This is Jim Lady with Citizen 926 Spokane. I'm just curious if all the information regarding the safe haven boxes were provided to the commissioners prior to this meeting, so they could research it themselves. I went and looked on their website and found out that with the boxes, there are three triggers. There's one when the door's open, one when the baby's placed in the bassinet, and one when the door is shut. I also looked at Idaho law and found that there is immunity for providers as well for when they are receiving the child, as long as it was in good intention. And so it looks like there's immunity for providers as well. And as it goes to whether or not the technology fails, we rely on technology all the time for 911. And we have three triggers for the baby box. I think this is a good idea because Idaho has banned abortion. So if you don't go forward with something to help save babies, you're not doing anything better. So I would say that.
Thank you. I'll comment on your comment about, we do receive the information ahead of time and ask questions. But part of this is the business meeting of the people to have that dialogue and to hear input from the public, as well as to have the dialogue between the commissioners as a board, because we don't talk about the items on the agenda as a board ahead of time. Mrs. Kramer?
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident. We went to the Life Choices Pregnancy Center auction Saturday. And Janine, sorry, Janine presented this and we saw a video of it in work, I guess you could say, in Florida, and a little story about a baby that was dropped off and the couple that adopted it. Anyway, I just think, I think it's a great idea. If we can save a life, we, we should do whatever we can to save a life. I appreciate the liability questions. I guess one of my questions is, you know, I don't know how long safe haven boxes have been in existence, but have there been liability issues? Is there any history of any liability issues in their history?
Do you know the answer to that, Jeff?
I don't, I'm not aware of any. I have spoke to the safe haven baby box people. They're, and, and I believe they said there's 256 boxes in 17 states currently in operation. So that's a lot of boxes that are in operation. And then the only one in Idaho that I am aware of, that they were, that they spoke of was in, somewhere in southern Idaho, I want to say like Blackfoot, Idaho or somewhere like that. So this would be the only other one in Idaho, current in operation.
And then my other question was, is the box in the EMS station, is it, I'm, I'm assuming it's glass on the inside, where people walk by and assuming the alarms don't work, someone will see the baby in there, if there is a baby in there?
It's a solid front.
It is a solid front? Okay.
It's a, a solid front on the front side, but on the backside, it's, it's, you know, we can see the baby in the, o- o- on the backside.
Okay, that was my, okay. All right, thank you. I, I, I think it's a great idea. I understand the liability questions, but I think you have to weigh a life versus, so anyway, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jean Bensmer, Bonner County resident. My feedback for you is, somebody is with an education background. I work with a lot of young people and have through the years, a lot of pregnant teenagers. And I have walked into their homes and have seen a lot of different environments and some of the hopelessness in some of the cases that I've seen personally. You have families that are shaming daughters who are at this place where, you know, they have no other place to go. And I would really hate to see that we were okay with giving away an $800,000 road, but we aren't willing to take on the risk of having a box for a child to have a safe haven for. That, it frustrates me as a woman to not, to say, hey, we're okay with not having great prenatal care in our community, because we don't have the doctors here, but we're not willing to provide a alternative in case a woman finds herself hedged in with no place to go. I would suggest to look into the idea of having a camera to mitigate some of that liability that you're concerned about. I would also think about, you know, that there probably will be other places that a child might come from, not necessarily this county. You know, because there are women in other states that are nearby that are also dealing with not maybe having a place to go. You might deal with human trafficking coming through the area and dropping off of, I would rather see the baby go in the box than the lake. So that's my two cents, it's worth the risk.
Any other comments?
Dennis Engelhardt, Bonner County residence. Can you, if you know, what's the percent increase in the chance of survivability if a baby is put into one of these boxes as opposed to a park bench?
Oh, I have no idea. On a park bench here, you're not going to last long.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would imagine it's significant.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it fair to say that this child put in this box is a citizen of the state of Idaho?
Not necessarily. So there's
But probability it would be.
Probability, yes, but
And here in Bonner County, it would probably be a citizen of Bonner County.
Of Bonner County.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first duty of government is to protect its citizens. When the sheriff dispatches people to a call, he doesn't sit down and look at his account, the liability and all that. He, he performs his statutory duty and he sends people to help whoever it is. And I think we should not be so concerned about possible liability and be more concerned about protecting our citizens, of which this child is.
Diane Willey.
Hi, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Diane Willey, Bonner County. Like you, Asia, I'm a nurse and I know we see the value of this. I don't think that any of the commissioners are saying that we shouldn't do this because of the liabilities. I think they're saying we should consider the liabilities and plan accordingly. And I think everyone is in agreement, we'd rather have a baby in a box than a baby in a trash can. But I do think that there is value in, in your asking about it being at the hospital only because of the conditions here in Idaho. And that, that was an interesting comment that you made, because there is, there wouldn't be a five-minute response, there'd probably be a three-minute response or a two-minute response if it was at the hospital. And there are quiet places at the hospital versus the busy street that somebody would see a woman on, you know, putting a baby in a box, there's traffic that goes by. So I think the anonymity part could be handled depending on where at the hospital a box would be placed. But I think these boxes work well and I think that they are the safest option for a baby who's at risk because of a mother in crisis. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
John Dupree, a resident of the county. This is a subject I really hadn't thought about and I must say I'm brokenhearted and on the verge of tears just talking about this, but I'm also very proud of the fact that we are addressing this as a community. And I appreciate Asia's medical background in pursuing all of this stuff. Now, it seems to me that a naive person, of which I will admit I to me that a naive person, of which I will admit I am in many ways, a young lady that has a baby that needs to do something that she can't keep it, would be more prone to just automatically go to a hospital than to some government facility that they may or may not be aware of. And I'm not hearing us talking much about having the facility at a hospital. And it does make more sense to me that because of the immediacy that the baby can be treated if need be, would be better going to a hospital than going to a government facility. Now, we can, as a government, you know, work with the hospital on that versus having to provide facility and go through all the hoops that are necessary. But I thank you for addressing this, solving, attempting to solve a problem before it becomes a problem. Now, I have a question for the EMS guy. You say that there are facilities like this around the country. Can you share with us some historical evidence of its efficiency or lack thereof in our, for our discussion? Is that okay? Thank you.
I can tell you that you see these in, like, there's quite a few in places where you have high issues. One of the things, when I was looking at Safe Haven in terms of boxes, our climate had a, I had a concern on our climate is different than where these boxes are typically housed. I, there's, there are places where they get high frequency of people using the boxes. The one in Idaho doesn't have high frequency of use. And I think that's in part what some people are commenting on. I don't agree that it's not obligatory of the commissioners to address what do you require before you enter into a lease, for example. To say we would sign in advance of knowing that we have addressed the issues and concerns, issues and concerns aren't for just the county. I'm specific to the baby that's being put in the box. And so that's, and I can appreciate Chief Lindsay's response of trying to work out those issues and concerns. I don't think anybody on the board is hinting at this isn't a good idea for the county. The difference is, is do you understand what you're signing before you sign it, or do you sign after? And it isn't the signature, it's, I want to make sure we've mitigated the risks for the individuals involved in it. And the, when you surrender your baby to a healthcare professional, it is, it's similar to your, the Good Samaritan doctrine. I am not liable when I receive a baby as a nurse from the community. That's, this is a different situation. This, it's a box. And so arguably, there's a reasonable statement to say, it's a box, the box can malfunction, there's a liability. I'm not saying you don't do the box. I'm saying you have to know what that liability is and create a plan to address what could potentially go wrong in our environment. Because we would be one of the few in our climate, in our environment, and it isn't attached to healthcare. Some people put these next to healthcare departments. That's not EMS. EMS is charged with being an emergency responder. The triggering of questions is reasonable and appropriate, because I could argue, if you put your baby in the box and then you didn't like what happened, if something, say there's a negative outcome for whatever reason. We all know that litigation costs money, and you can say you don't have the right to sue us because you surrendered, but there's still a liability. Now, does that mean that we don't care about the liability, our community is willing to absorb that? Probably, but it still requires that we have the conversation, which is what this meeting is supposed to be, not to say, it doesn't matter, we just sign it. Because that's not, that's not good practices. I, the mention of the camera, the hard part on the camera is, the whole reason is, someone doesn't want to be seen versus using the secreted away, when I gave the suggestion of, like, you've seen those nursing stations, you see them in the airports or wherever. You could go in, leave your baby in that box, there's not a camera there watching you. Yes, people will use their smart electronics to see where you traveled throughout the world, but it's the best that you can do in a tough situation, and they're 24/7. I don't disagree with the baby box. I want to make sure we're doing the right thing for the baby that has to get put in the box. You might as well just come out, because she's just doing this.
I just want to address the fire department versus the hospital question. And, and just my thought or my gut on that is that there, I think the chief is right. Nine times out of 10, you're not, this is not even going to be an issue. A family will help, you know, somebody who's pregnant unexpectedly. I've seen, I have seen the extreme, and I, but I'm thinking of that person that's either trafficked through the area or who's in a, all of a sudden, a last-minute hopeless situation. And sometimes, if there's not, there might be a fear or of going to the hospital because of a variety of reasons. And having that alternative place, like, I don't know, firefighters and EMS tend to often feel like a safer, it's a group of guys who are generally there to help, not like the police, unfortunately, rightly. Firefighters just like, you know, better.
Please send all the babies to law enforcement so he can change his image.
Just, not like, but, so that's my only thought on that, is that for a woman who's in a, in a, most women you would think would go to the hospital, but I think if there was a quiet place off, firefighters don't seem like the kind of guys that are going to run out and arrest you or, or shame you, or as a woman to, you know, just, I think that I understand what, why the EMS building was chosen here. So if you can work that problem.
No worries. I have a question for Chief Lindsay, and then I'll go to Diane. What's the reason not to, because you don't have the box. And I don't think this is a question of whether or not we should do it. Mine is, why not bring forward all of the information after you've worked out all of the details? Is there a reason not to do that? What's the reason you're asking for a signature before you've done those things?
Which, which information are you talking about specifically?
You mentioned that you would have to have a discussion with other EMS or firefighters on who would do a secondary if you guys weren't available for some reason. You said that it was in the infancy stages of it. Why ask, why not just move forward with it and have the plan and address those concerns and then bring it back and ask for a signature? Because I don't think anybody's held up on the idea. My question is, why are we signing something when we don't know what we're really signing?
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, I will, I will handle that question. So again, I'm not going to go have a bunch of meetings with dispatch and get everything all set up before we even know if this is even going to, because I didn't know if this was even going to get approved or not. So again, once this gets approved, I have a meeting with dispatch, this is what we want, this is what we want set up. And they can set up based on response planning, who goes here, who does what. This is something that can be done pretty quickly if we get approved. So again, I, I'm not going to go get all this stuff set up, waste everyone's time if it's not even going to get approved. So once it gets approved, we can get it set up pretty quick and be ready to roll, so.
Why not give us the plan of what you are going to set up? I mean, because you mentioned that-
We've already done that.
No.
So the, the plan, yes. So the plan, I just want to be clear. The plan would be, dispatch controls all of this. So basically, the response plan would be Bonner County EMS, I don't want to get way down in the weeds on this, but I can if you need me to, Bonner County EMS, Sandpoint PD, Sandpoint Fire, those are in the response plan for when this alarm triggers. So that's something dispatch does on their end. They build it into the response plan. So that would be the plan on our end. And then, once that happens and these agencies are going, then we pick the baby up, we transport him to the hospital, law enforcement's obviously involved. And, you know, once we take him to the hospital, we don't, after that, we don't have really any say in it. So on our end, the front load on our end would be sitting down with dispatch, telling them who we want to respond to these incidents on the response plan, and then work from there. So, and these are things that can go, I mean, we can do this pretty quick if we know that this is even going to be a thing.
And so have you already reached out to the other agencies and they agreed to be part of that response plan for this box? Is that what, because on one of my questions, you said you hadn't reached out to them. So that's what I-
No, I, you're right. I have not reached out to them, because again, I go back to the original, until this is a thing, I'm not going to go have a bunch of meetings and go, hey, this is the response plan for the baby box that may or may not get approved. So once it's approved, I can get this done really quick time, because again, Sandpoint Fire is not going to say, the chief over there is not going to go, my guys are not going if a, if a call goes out. They're going to go, and it's just going to be a matter of sitting down.
There are, there's no agency going to not respond.
Right. So again, it's just a matter of getting these guys together, putting an email out, getting these guys together and going, hey, this is what we would request when this happens. If the alarm goes off and dispatch puts out a, whatever the call might be, then, you know, this is, this is the response plan based on that.
And I understand they're not going to say no, but we didn't have a plan in place, and you're saying that won't take you very long to put together if the board approves-
That's correct.
-the agreement, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
And you would submit the plan after they agree to this document that you've put forward?
Say that again?
You would submit the plan with contingency concerns once the board makes a decision on what you've put forward?
Yes. And when you say submit the plan, who, submit it?
Well, you'd show us, like, the plan of what the contingency is and who's doing that, like, whatever the safety checks that happen. You're saying you're going to do that after.
Sure, absolutely.
Diane Willey, and then-
Could I make a comment? So once the box is purchased, it takes six to eight weeks, and then after that, time to install. But they'll send somebody out. There's going to be a person on site from the company to make sure, because we need, we, we want safety just as you do. And they know what, they deal with this all the time. So they'll send somebody out that'll help guide us through the process and make sure that we're not missing anything, too.
Okay. Diane Willey, and then you and I think will be done with public comment on this one. Diane?
I do have a concern with the EMS response. The reason these aren't taken to, these boxes are not put outside police departments is because the baby's in the box and the baby's not doing well. Policemen can do nothing except take it to a hospital. They don't have the medical wherewithal. If they are put in this building, an EMS building, is there a guarantee that there is a paramedic on duty who can treat a baby in extremis? That is a big concern, because with a five-minute response time, then you add your drive time to the hospital, you've put a lot of time on a baby in extremis. If a box is outside of a hospital, they get immediate care. Another is a real concern, is that an EMT, a regular EMT, not an EMTP, but an EMT or just an emergency response responder is not going to be able to give care to a baby in extremis. So that's a real concern to me, and I, I love this idea. I think it should be implemented, but I think that the location should be considered.
John?
John Dupree, once again. And, you know, I agree with this lady here. And when I was hearing the report from the chief about that it has to go for this person or that person, and there's a procedural thing, why is the government even involved? Why don't we have, quote unquote, the drop box at the hospital itself? And then whatever we need from a government standpoint to follow through. But does the government really have to be involved in this? Why can't the mother, who is stressed out, who is obviously going through emotional trauma, instead think about taking that child to a hospital and take it from there? We are eliminating all of our insurance issues and all of our chain of command issues. Why have the government involved? Just set it up so the child can get immediate medical care.
Asia, can I answer Diane's question, please?
Sure.
Just to answer her question regarding EMT versus paramedic. We are a advanced life support agency, which means there's a paramedic at every Bonner County EMS station. We are actually heavy paramedics. So there's usually at least two paramedics on shift at Station 1. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right. At, at this time, I'm going to end public comment, going to allow Risk to slide in here since he doesn't count as public comment.
Chris Jocelyn, Risk manager. If you'd like, you can amend, you can approve it to get it started. And maybe right before turnkey and starts, have Sheriff, EMS, and Risk sign off. Once the box is installed, if you want us to safety thing, have one final tour of it, just to make sure, to set up the way you like and have it sign off by the parties.
I was actually going to ask that suggestion, because I don't think the question is not whether or not you have a box. I am looking at it from a medical risk to the person we're putting in the box, and I can't default on, the box will never get used, but we need a box. I'm going to default on, the box needs to get used, there's a baby in the box, how do I make sure the baby in the box is the safest? And so it's not a question for me of whether or not the box is valuable. It's, I have to mitigate the risks of the box existing, and where is the right place for the box, which, there's an argument on both sides, because I initially, and I sent it to Chief Lindsay, of, hospital is the best option for the box. If we don't use hospital, we have to mitigate it. And yes, EMS is staffed with paramedics, but they're on calls. We can't, that doesn't mean you can't make it work with a box on the station. But I'm asking, I'm going to ask that we amend it, that we move forward with the box, but that it needs to get signed off by EMS, the Risk and Legal, that we've mitigated the risks associated to the baby in the box. Because we are accepting as a county that baby isn't getting left on the bench. That's not what we're talking about. So we don't have to go outside the bell curve to think of a, this is the worst-case scenario. It is likely not to be used, but I want to look at it as, there's a baby in the box, now what? Not, there's never going to be a baby in the box. So with that, I would like to kind of do a discussion with the board on what your thoughts are. My concern is, there's a baby in the box, now what do you do? The box is on EMS station. And when I looked on Safe Haven, I looked to look at demographics of where the boxes are. Not that they're not good boxes, our climate is different, our needs are different, our times are different. How do we make sure that that baby in the box has the chance that we intended it to have by putting it in the box? That's, and I'm agreeable to the idea of allowing EMS to move forward with the box, but making sure that it is signed off for the safety and risk plan that says, if that baby is in the box, we've mitigated as much as we possibly can for putting it in the box if the community says box on the station. That, that's my focus on it. She's just, you better whisper in his ear, I close public comment. Sorry. What are your thoughts?
I'm personally ready to move forward on, on what's been presented to us.
Okay. Commissioner Bradshaw?
100% in favor.
Risk had a comment that you were going to make, or no?
Sorry about that. It's pos, it's not a competitive thing. It's possible to have more than one box in town. So just because we have the box doesn't mean the hospital on their own could seek the same thing, correct?
Yeah. No, for sure. I think that it's reasonable to ask the hospital to also have a box there, because there, there's a reason some people would put a newborn baby in a box closer to a hospital than in the EMS station, too. So I will entertain a motion.
Based on information before us, I move to approve the lease service agreement for the Safe Haven baby box.
Go second, that gladly.
All right. A discussion by the board. I don't have a problem with the box. I think it requires a sign off before we do it, which is why I would like the amendment for it. So if the board is deciding they don't want an amendment for sign off from Risk, EMS, and Sheriff, and the group that is going, has done it, I will let it stand. I just think there's a reason to check it off after we've seen that we've mitigated. And sometimes, even in this conversation, people have brought up things that maybe were not considered when the idea is there. And sometimes incorporating those concerns can be valuable as a community. So with that, roll call vote.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Abstain?
Yes.
And I only abstain because I want to get the risks mitigated at, before we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioners.
It's a fantastic idea. All right. Sheriff, who doesn't like babies, who, that's basically what we said here all day. You better take some photographs with babies or something.
Well, Sheriff, here, for the record, and Diane Willey, I was present at the birth of all four of my children. So I do have experience.
He kissed a couple of them or something.
And, and I've watched that series, The Midwives or whatever. Yeah, so, so I, I have enough experience.
So he'll birth babies, too, is what he's saying. All right, Sheriff.
So, good morning, Commissioners. Idaho Code 311605 provides that the Board of County Commissioners may adjust the budget as adopted, provided that there shall be no increase in anticipated property taxes. On September 17th, 2024, Bonner County Commissioners approved the fencing purchase for the Bonner County Sheriff's Office complex from Idaho- for the Bonner County Sheriff's Office complex from Idaho Fence for $40,527.28. Funds are to come from account 00822/7860, dispatch miscellaneous expenses of $3,220. Account 03461/7420, detention equipment at a rate of $5,557.52. And account 03461/7860, detention miscellaneous of $3,500. And account 0345/7430, Sheriff's Building account, $24,000. And the last account, 03450/760, Sheriff's miscellaneous of $4,249.76. Should we take a break now? Okay, whereas this project has been started and will be finished in November fiscal year 2025, the Sheriff's Office will need the obligated funding to pay for this project. The Sheriff's Office requests the Commissioners authorize the clerk to open fiscal year 2025 budget and add all of those accounts that I just said. Please reference the attached budget amendment resolution, and this has been approved by legal.
All right, any comments from the public? Citizen 926.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is there a building plan for the public to view to see where the spence is being put? And is there also a estimate on the material to find out how much material is being purchased?
That was submitted in the packet on September 17th, and it's a public record.
How do we obtain that? Would you just have to do a public record request, or is it online?
You would have to ask the board if it's online.
I think that, I don't know that it, it actually, I think they do post the meeting package, and so you could still see it online on the county website.
Diane Welly?
I just have to tease, tease the sheriff, he can hold my grandchildren any old day. Let him intimidate them.
This was not an agenda item, stay on top. Go and kiss her babies, she says. All right, any other public comment? Seeing nine, we will.
Was this project started on or before September 30th?
Sure was.
Okay, so I just have, it's just a clerical error, I'm sure, but I think the Idaho Code would be 31-1609, if I'm not mistaken, which would move funds from fiscal year 24 budget to the fiscal year 25 budget to pay for it when it's finished in '25. Am I correct?
I can't correct, I can't answer that question. Do we have the auditor control error?
I think this one is that he references adjusting the budget.
It's adjusting the budget.
You reference adjusting, and he's referencing moving.
Yeah.
It's not an adjustment, it's just a carryover.
They're both talking about two different things.
Yeah, the 1609 brings funds from last year's budget forward to this year's budget, so that you could finish a project that started last year that's going to finish this year, right?
He's talking about a different one.
He's talking about 31-1605.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll entertain a motion. I will step down from the chair, and I will motion to approve Resolution 24, is that a one or a two? Okay, 82, authorizing the clerk to open the Sheriff's Jail Dispatch FY 2025 budgets and carry forward fiscal 2024 funds totaling $40,527.28 to Bonner County Sheriff and Dispatch B budgets that's detailed in the resolution. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
All right, any discussion from the board?
Amen.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Up next is Christian Jocelyn.
Christian Jocelyn, Risk Manager, for the record. I have an item before you requesting to renew the ThinkZoom, that's our trading platform. I had this last week, and I have additional info for you.
Okay.
And it's still been reviewed and approved by legal, HR, Risk, and auditing. I have some good questions the board had last week, and I thought I had my notes printed out, if you want, I can give it to you later. Just quickly, a timeline on ThinkZoom. We started in 2021, it's been the same price ever since. August of '23, I came to the board whether to continue the active shooter portion, they said yes, go ahead. November of '23, you know, getting ready for budget season, we asked the board to, should we keep it going and look for others? And it was instructed, yeah, just keep it going, it's been good. And then the contract is ending basically this month, so the new contract will be 11-1 of '24 to 10-31 of '25. And then I'll go through quickly here on the purpose of it. Most of the counties are ICRAP insured, and they have training programs, that whole thing. We're one of the few that are self-insured, and so we have to do our own training program to minimize risk. And then here's how we've been using the ThinkZoom. First off, orientation and new hires, we use that heavily. Every new hire probably attends four or five hours minimum of different classes that we have to go through. We also use it for annual compliance training. Around this time of year, I give a sheet to each department on how their safety numbers look, and they select courses for the next year to help reduce it, reduce the risk. Next thing is continuous improvement, I might have one I just mentioned. Next one is department-specific training, and of course, the ThinkZoom does not cover how to drive a grader, or how to do a proper arrest, that is too much detail, that's done by each department. ThinkZoom could be used to track it, but that's probably more specific training ThinkZoom couldn't do. And the final one is personal certifications. You know, a lot of our employees need to have specialty training, and ThinkZoom or a similar type of program would not be good for that, that's too specialized for this. This is more generic across the whole organization. I listed some options to doing the ThinkZoom renewal. One is we can create an in-house training and a tracking program. The chances are it'll be more expensive, it'll be more effective maybe, but more expensive, because we're talking by an in-house trainer and a full syllabus, almost like opening a mini-college. So I'm guessing that would cost a hundred thousand or more to have an in-house person and all the materials and all that, but you can have some high specialized classes. Another option is do an alternative program, and that would be maybe just a month or so set up. I have checked around, and there's some that have safety topics only, not the HR, and those are about five grand a year, but we'd have to populate all the custom content. And the final option probably is just add more custom content to the ThinkZoom. We've done it a bunch, anytime there's a new policy, it's pretty quick to upload it, have people sign off, or you can do links and tests and all that, and that can be done pretty rapidly. What I recommend, but of course, up to the board, is recommend just, because it'll take weeks or months to start a new system, especially a homegrown, home-hosted system would take, you know, half a year maybe to get started, just to continue it, because it's been budgeted, it's been kind of planned for. But if the board wishes, instruct Risk and HR to work with all the elected and department heads to find out their needs, so for next budget year, we can pick the direction, and maybe give me a deadline of January 1st to report back on recommendations, so it's incorporated the next budget year. And the only reason for that is, I'm not a fan of, we've done it in the past, let's keep doing it. But this case, training is important for sharing policies and best practices, and since we can't guarantee a new system within just weeks, there's a high chance if we don't renew, it'd be a multi-month gap of not the training program. So we can make it work wherever we decide. I prefer to have consistency and then properly talk to all the elected department heads if you make a change of what they would like to see, and then do it in a more planned format versus kind of scrambling. That's my recommendation.
Annie will open up for public comment.
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident. I highly recommend not going the route of in-house training development, just, government is government, and safety is, there are a lot of safety, but you know, all that stuff is just standard corporate across the country, and to do it in-house, I think would be cost prohibitive, cost prohibitive. And my other comment, I guess, is more, probably more general, but any of these contracts that come up for renewal, probably good to look at them, you know, three months in advance of the expiration, so there's time to talk to department heads, et cetera, versus, you know, at the last minute, but that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, so we'll entertain a motion for a second and then discuss.
Based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve signing and paying the HSI renewal contract for $22,450 out of the TORT 024-6490 education fund for which it has been budgeted.
There's a motion. All right, discussion by the board?
So, I'm going to echo the public comment, is we should have looked at this sooner, because I thought last week we tabled this, and we were going to actually maybe dive into that $5,000 plan and see what we were going to get for money there, and I thought that's what I was going to expect to hear about today. So maybe I misunderstood, I'm not sure, but.
And when I did, I did do the test drive of the $5,000 system back, it was like January, February, that's where we brought it to the board meetings, before your time, to say, hey, do you want me to pursue different systems? And the board advised, just, yeah, it's fine, just keep it going, so I kind of dropped it. But the system was very similar as far as the tracking portion and custom content, but the preloaded thing was a fraction, like maybe a fifth or so of the ThinkZoom. It had none of the compliance or business practice, business skills, it was strictly safety only. So that would be a good base system for tracking and having everybody have their login details, you know, to be able to take the classes, but we would have to build it from scratch, pretty much, didn't have most of the classes that we take in there. So that's why I kind of dropped it in March.
So could we work towards that for next year?
Oh, yeah.
Because it sounds like some of the input from the department heads was that the training was redundant for people that have been here for a few years, and we're not really getting our money's worth out of that system, it does sound like. New hires obviously could be different, but if we could get better training for the same amount of money, or even less, I think we should look into that.
That's why I recommend, maybe the board, if they'd like, is give me a date, like January 1st, and have a report on what the elected department heads feel about it, or what systems are important to them, and then, that way you have plenty of time before budget time to properly budget and set up a new system. And in a perfect world, have parallel systems, so when 10-1 comes around, you just switch it over, it's not, try to scramble.
So for me, this is a human resources risk issue, like this, this is training that you guys use, you guys need to be tracking and trending when people have exhausted that before it's time for renewal, but also understanding, it's not, it's not, the departments are supposed to tell us, I need some additional training because of my specialty, but what this is mostly used for is the onboarding of new staff. And so my question is, a little bit similar to Commissioner Cornes, you had mentioned last week that there was a $5,000 program that addressed that, that aspect of the onboarding that you do for new hires, like your sexual harassment workplace-type courses, and that anything above and beyond that, that we could look at. Because what I don't see is kind of that presentation that we're getting $22,000 worth of training if it's just being used for those people that we onboard. Could we have dropped it down from $22,000 to $5,000, and then looked for a training that would follow the growth of our organization? That's what I was expecting to see, and I have a heartburn over saying, we're getting close to the renewal period, just renew it, because we don't have another option, when part of what was discussed last time was departments are not utilizing this platform because it's redundant, and the most use comes from HR, and arguably, some of those HR how-to-talk in the workplaces, those aren't difficult to actually manufacture, but, because it sounds like we're going to be voting, this didn't come forward that it was, the value was exhausted before it needed to be renewed, but we still need a program to bridge the gap until we have a different program. And so for me, I'd like to see you guys, HR needs to look at what do you need for onboarding, and have already had, we've already done a budget, we've already done supposed evaluations, we should know what the departments need for their education and training from HR that we know we should or shouldn't do it before it came to the board, that's.
No, it is used, I can give you a report, I mean, it is used by all departments. In the past, they tied in even bonuses to it, or other performance-type things, we're hitting 100% completion. But yeah, that's the nice thing about the system, is you can track by employee or by departments, all been set up, so.
So what's your use, what's the use of it? I mean, at the $5,000 program, did it address the issues that HR has with onboarding? Because what was communicated was other departments aren't using it for the other things that ThinkZoom has available. So is it even worth spending the money there if what you really need to bridge the gap on is onboarding of new staff? Could that be accomplished with the $5,000 program?
And there are some other options we could do, like if the board didn't, we wouldn't be just dead in the water, what happens if we didn't have this? Let's say there's a new policy, we just have to email it out to all department heads, please, please everybody sign off and acknowledge it. We can do it through maybe some Google forum or sign off, there's other ways to do it, too. And orientation, it could be changed to an in-house program you go through also, or just read these policies. So it would not be devastating not to renew it, it's just a system that works, but if you want to do a, a full system, that might take months to do, but we can kind of bandy it together, a system of sign off on this and that, so it's not critical. It's a good thing it's worked for us, and the use is more valuable for new people versus people who have been here maybe for five, 10 years, they've seen most of it, but it would not be devastating if we did not approve it, we'd just figure out a new system quickly.
So, Christian, this HSI program, is that the one that Bart's been using a lot? Kevin Rockenberger?
Oh, I don't think so, I'm not, Kevin, not, nothing special. HSI is the ThinkZoom, he's probably used it like an employee, but I don't know how to answer that, I don't believe there's any special, it's nothing to do with the medical insurance or anything, so I'm not sure what you mean, I don't think he's a higher user than anybody else. I don't believe, I'm missing something, but is this a normal online ThinkZoom training that every department head picks classes for next year, and then takes, people have a whole year to take those classes? They're the short five-minute videos with a little test afterwards, that type of stuff. It's similar to, IT has their own training program, also digital, it's similar, but IT's is strictly phishing and, you know, that kind of stuff, this is all topics, basically.
So you said it wouldn't be catastrophic if we don't renew this? If we look into the other option or other options, and we decide that we want to go with this, would there be an issue with, not necessarily redoing, but signing up a month after the expiration date, just go ahead and bring this back in December?
Oh, 100%, there's no special start date. And I downloaded all the records, so for the training records, I have all that downloaded, so that's what I'm saying, I'm neutral on this, I recommend, until we have a plan, keep it going, but it's not going to be devastating, it'll just cause inconvenience for, especially the orientation, because they'd have to come up with a program pretty quickly, but that's, and then Alicia's on the call, if I get her opinion, I don't want to speak for HR, because that's her thing, is the orientation.
What is the date that this actually expires, Christian?
11-1, is it?
11-1, okay. So I don't like the idea of renewing for the sake of renewing, and I think HR should bring forward information as to why we're renewing it, not just to say it's an easy policy keeper, but I equally understand that not having something to bridge the gap, and so creates a problem for the county. We could, and we have another Tuesday before, so I, I would ask the board, would we consider a motion that gave actually very specific instructions that HR and Risk needed to come back with other available programs to include? What program, the $5,000 one that was mentioned last week, what did it offer, how could it bridge it before we commit? I understand this was committed, but, and again, it's the right thing to do the cost benefit to the county, but when we're saying that, we're not benefiting from the $22,000, and there's other areas to put our money in, and people are training, using money out of the county coffer to educate and train themselves, but not pulling that, we're not benefiting from the $22,000 and there's other areas to put our money in and people are training, using money out of the county coffer to educate and train themselves, but not pulling that into the organization, what are we getting for $22,000 other than to say, here's a platform that removes my obligation in HR to show you something versus, here's $5,000, do your onboarding, we can track it, and then we need to figure it out. Because I don't feel like I got brought forward an option other than what we heard last week, which was, we've exhausted it, but it's easy. And I, that's a hard $22,000 decision to make for me.
And just, you know, the $5,000, I didn't give enough details. I got the full test drive of it. It's pretty much identical as far as reports and make custom content. The only difference really is that, first off, nobody's set up in there yet. So you have to, everybody has to get their new passwords and all that. It's not a big deal. And number two, it only had, I'm guessing, 50 safety topics, while the ThinkZoom has, you know, maybe 100 safety and a couple hundred HR, a couple hundred business.
If you have 100 of all of them and we've exhausted it, then it doesn't really matter.
That's why it's not that we're changing.
I mean, that's my thought on it is, and arguably, HR should be doing a workshop on, do we switch or what do we have to supplement? Because I don't want to throw money we can't afford at a program that we're not using, which there's no metric saying, are we even using all of the other options available? It only matters what we're taking advantage of. So I would step down from the chair and make a motion that HR and RIS need to bring this issue back to the board on Tuesday with evidence of the other program that you've identified that was $5,000 to show the compare-contract benefit to the county of making a decision to change versus using HSI ThinkZoom specifically, because that's what we were, that's what I thought we were going to see, so that we know, do we need to move forward? Because my vote isn't going to be, is this the right program? It's just, do we need to? Because we didn't do a different thing.
So you want to demo the other program?
I want to see why we're paying 22 versus 5 if we've exhausted the $22,000 training.
What was the actual demo, you're saying? Just to be clear, an actual demo of side-by-side how they look, you mean, or, or different?
And the metrics of what our organization is using. Because if the treasurer's office isn't using ThinkZoom because they've exhausted its availability, for me, arguably, HR needs to have already spoken to the departments on training because that is, human capital management is in the HR field. And so that needs to come forward to say, I've spoken to these departments. This is what they need. This is what they don't need. So it doesn't matter that they have 200 extra. They're only doing this.
Is that all about your motion?
I stopped a minute ago. We'll figure it out. Just.
I can send the report to you. I'll send the download report to you of all the classes if you like.
We do need some money to plow the sheriff's parking lot, I think.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Yes. All right. I am going to report out for HR. There's an executive session today to go over the zoning commission applications. There are 32 open positions and you can see that on the county website. If you would like to apply for a job, you can reach out to Human Resources directly and she will help you with that. Next item is Commissioner to discussion. Commissioner Chat, today is our discussion with our ag protection. It's going to be in this room because downstairs is filled with elections. So today, from 2:00 to 4:00, we will have a ag protection discussion with David Anderson with American Farmland Trust and Justin Buckley with Idaho Coalition of Land Trust and Dan Elliott, local farm bureau president. We, as a board, have to make an ordinance with respect to protecting agricultural land by January. This is an opportunity to understand the, what was just passed. And part of the discussion is also, how are we reviewing subdivisions? How are we reviewing our septic and water? And it's being talked a lot about down south, but we need to start pulling those people here. So they are in our area to have that discussion with us. So you can log on by Zoom. The Zoom link is already on the county's website. On November 8th, we have our lunch and learn. The location is, everybody who wants to say they needed a PIN, have their PIN out. Okay. Cootney County Admin Building at 10:00 AM. Chief Carpenter with Spirit Valley is going to give a presentation on fire levy and kind of a request to legislators to look at how we fund fire. Ongoing issues and concerns, Camp Bay easement, no, did she just do this? So both commissioners have gone out and taken a walk on that road. So thank you to Mr. Brownlee for showing us the road. The document that we reviewed has, I've sent my issues, questions, and concerns to legal, which have gone back to, into review. So we'll keep reporting out on that. I can say that on my walk, Brownlee actually accepted some suggestions from Parks and Recs. I went with our Parks and Recs director. So I'll keep refurbishing the topic of Camp Bay easement, but we're moving forward with reviewing that document. I'm still doing the audit, internal audit on HR, come up with some findings that have me doing a little bit deeper of an audit. It is not going to be a quick answer. Some people have asked me, what are the findings? It is not a quick answer when you do a full official internal audit. But thank you to HR for responding and answering questions. Right now, I'm focusing on also auditing how benefits are administered and paid to make sure there's checks and balances of that process, because once you give something, you cannot take it back. We had our Panhandle Health update yesterday. One of the big changes I think that as a community will be thankful for is a director of medical, that is what they're looking at to address kind of sending out our emergency alerts. Litigation update. There is no response from the AG. I keep asking. The updated answer today is there's no response regarding that payment today. I'll keep checking in with that regarding that status. Pending workshops. Bonner County Credit Card Workshop is Monday at 10:00 AM. If your department has a credit card, please participate in that workshop. I'm also asking people to pay attention to what you're spending. There's a lot of spending happening across the street. There's spending happening in this building. People are buying new furniture, but then also saying, we're getting rid of furniture. We need to be mindful. We didn't, when we did budget, people didn't say, I'm going to spend $5,000 on new furniture. That's not what happened. And so we're going to review the credit cards. It's a lot of access to the county budget. I'm encouraging everybody to attend. If you're not able to attend, send a message if you're on the list of a whole bunch of credit cards. Part of doing internal controls is limiting the access to spending Bonner County money. And we're moving in that direction. You should have stopped me. I skipped me. I just skipped me in a different way.
It's still you.
It's, yeah. And then I'll be attending the Idaho Rural Water Association. There's a lot of talk about water. We are doing a conference on the 21st in Coeur d'Alene. And so that was my commissioner update that I completely did out of order because I saw my name twice. The first thing was filling vacancies and it was just going to be a discussion. I didn't do a motion. We have had people add jobs into the county system and it didn't come from like an HR type of a commission. It's just, we need this role. And so one of the things I wanted the board to review is, not with respect to elected officials, but specific to directors, should directors be able to continue to just repost a job that was already posted? Or should it come before the board for an agency check to see if the positions are still needed? Some departments are moving towards self-service options that make you question, are we needing the same number of people? Or should we be lowering kind of the census in some of these departments? But if we allow people to automatically renew, we're not able to catch it once the, that particular office is vacant. I put it as a discussion because I think it's worth having a discussion with the board on before bringing it as a decision. So any thoughts from the board on that?
I do think it's a good idea as a board to review vacancies when they come up, just to make sure that it is still needed. I'd also like to say that it should be done in a timely manner, because some of these people that may need that position, we don't want to hold them up either as far as putting the job out for hire. So if we could do it in a timely manner, hopefully they would let us know when the vacancy was coming up so we could start working on that and get it out there as quickly as possible. Because it's gonna, some of these people, it's gonna double or triple their workload possibly. And I don't want to be the one that's standing in the way of them being able to do that.
The other thing that came up to mind is internal positions. Sometimes we have departments that elevate their own people internally from their department, but internals are postings. So that if I want to get out of a job that I don't like, internal posting means I could potentially go into a different department. Instead of in that department, we've already decided this person is going to get this job. And that's one of the things that hasn't been happening throughout this organization. Sometimes people just earmark a job for a person versus doing an official internal posting for the entire organization to have that opportunity. It's, that's what it's supposed to be. And then it goes external to everybody, not internal to my department, kind of a change, too. So any comment from you, Commissioner Bradshaw?
Nope.
So I'll just maybe bring it forward next week as a decision that we asked them to bring it forward to us. The other one that I had as a discussion decision is Amazon Capital Cards and Purchasing. Bonner County has a person whose job title is procurement, but they don't procure a lot of our stuff. We have Amazon Capital Card and people order and it goes into her box. So one of the things in doing audits that I found is, for example, we have a whole technology department. If I buy a mouse, it's not actually in the system of Bonner County that it's your community mouse. It's that I bought it. So we're not tagging things, identifying things for the cheapest cost, for example, or even what we can service or put underneath our current process with technology. And so one of my requests is to discuss it, but then to bring it again later, is that we need to use the procurement officer, not just everybody using credit cards and charging it, because we, once we slide that card, the county is responsible. Even though we need to work on that, kind of that credit card agreement, the county is liable for it and we then have to, as commissioners, argue with a purchase that we don't agree with. We also then end up with, my current frustration is, Amazon furniture is not sustainable furniture for public use. It's cheap furniture. A procurement officer would be procuring stuff that would be lasting. We also, and people are already seeing that, we're, people are ordering new furniture, but then we have these same items available and then we don't have a place to store it. And then somebody says, well, facilities, come and get this desk. I no longer want the desk. Why did we buy a desk if we had a desk? And it's not that it's supposed to be what I would like my office to look like at a home office. It's, this is government work. And that's, there's lists of things like that that I'm finding as I'm looking in some of these budgets of we're just, we're spending a little bit too easy. And I would like us to actually move to using a procurement officer, which we are paying already a salary for. I did speak with auditing. I did speak with the procurement officer. She's available to do that. And I wanted to be clear also, even for like pens and pencils, going on Amazon, just buying the fancy ones someone wants versus what's right for public money spending, that can be controlled and that leakage contained if we use the procurement office, officer for her function. And given the vacancies in this building, we have room to store some pens and pencils to where we're not just drop shipping. And so I would like a discussion with the board on that and to be able to bring it back to direct staff to get their, to give us, it allows an internal control. It allows us to track it. But also, if you leave the organization and you bought a laptop, we need our laptop back, but we don't know if we're not tracking that stuff. And there's a room full of stuff that we don't use because we just order it. So any thoughts on that?
Do you know if we have a directors meeting coming up anytime soon?
We do it monthly.
So that would be in like another couple of weeks then? Okay. Would that be a good time to discuss that amongst all of them and?
Here's my thing, and I'm gonna agree ahead of time that I am going to be the Grinch on this, which is why I did discussion. The spending is happening now. And for me, my request is if you want, for me as a taxpayer, I would want you to actually sign off on my purchase before I make it. Because for example, with the canvas print that was made, $350, the person is still out a portion of money. But in their mind, they spent it and they had a limit to spend. In my mind, it's, is this right for county taxpayer money? We don't have a system that's protecting the taxpayer dollars to accommodate kind of the proclivity of the county of just saying, let's make sure everybody agrees what they need to use a procurement officer. For me, we agreed to use a procurement officer when we gave that person the position. We just failed as a county to require people to go that direction. For example, with technology, and I'll say for staff, they have a system where they have a way to get less expensive equipment in technology. Now you go on their ticket, you can actually ticket a request for an item. And they'll go through and say, do you need a monitor? Nope, we have a monitor. And they'll give you the monitor they have, so we're not ordering it. I understand wanting to wait and that was, someone emailed and said, can we have it as a discussion with the, this staff? From my Grinch mode, it's no, because you spent my money now. So, but it's up to the board of what the discussion, because it's not a decision, it's a discussion on it. If you look at some of the expenditures, it's, we have a way to spend less and as the public has outcry and of what they want us to do, as staff say they want to see a competitive rate of pay. If we are leaking money on monitors that are game monitors and not the monitors that technology could have gotten for a lesser price, we will not keep a stable workforce. We can't give people the increases that they deserve based on their work product. And we cannot improve the roads. All of the things that we're supposed to do, we're just basically spending money. The other thing that is being spent is people use these credit cards for their paper plates and forks and spoons. That's not the public's money use. And it doesn't get caught until someone's internally auditing, which takes a long time. But it could get caught if we had an internal control that said you'd needed to go through a procurement officer.
So we don't have that policy currently, currently in place, that we have to go through the procurement officer?
Correct.
So we probably should have that policy.
I am asking that we discuss it now and I bring it back Tuesday. I didn't want to bring it back without the discussion on it. Sheriff Wheeler was jumping because you already spent like $40,000 on pens.
You got those expensive headlights. Yeah.
Sheriff Darryl Wheeler, for the record. I just, hopefully you can clarify.
Be clear, I said director. I did not say elected official.
There was a statement, if we use the card, we're obligated to pay it. And I'd like to, I think, just for the citizens that are online and here, that each elected official, independent elected official, is responsible personally for that operating budget. And if I go over that budget, that, I personally have to write a check to cover that. The sheriff's office has an auditor and has an accountant that tracks all of our, all of our purchases and our expenditures. So I'm very cognizant as elected official that when we get money allotted to our operating budget, that we spend it the most wise, wisely as we can. So I know that you're talking about directors because they have these credit cards, but we, our Amazon accounts that we have is a tax, is a county government account. We don't charge taxes. And we use those for items that we cannot get in a timely manner. Because if IT needs something, something's broken, we have to order it and it has to be here in two days. We can't wait because of operational efficiency. So I just wanted people to know that, that we just don't have credit cards at the sheriff's office that deputies are carrying around and if they want to buy dinner.
We see you guys in the coffee lane all the time.
Yes. All right. But I just wanted to share that.
Well, and you're right in that it's not the same as sheriff EMS. It's not the same. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, like, I know as a commissioner, for me, I don't see why I have a credit card, because I don't need a credit card. I don't have an unanticipated purchase. I'm going to go to an IAC training that is already scheduled. So I have the time to go over to the clerk's office and say, here's the perdiem request and do it that way. It isn't because I think I'm gonna go steal $5,000 off of it. It's that I have $5,000 access to the county budget. And yes, you could come after me if I did that, but it's still the county's responsibility since it's a county credit card. And those vectors to our budget is what I'm asking that the commissioners close to the least amount of credit cards possible. Planning is going to have to, and most often, some of these departments are going to need a credit card. Planning has to provide food for the planning and zoning. They need a card. That's what they're using their card for. But there are some departments that don't need that card. They can come over to auditing. They can ask for in advance for something that they're going to pay for. But do we need a $5,000 limit credit card? Because we have gas cards. We have Home Depot cards. We have capital cards. We have Bonner County cards. That's a lot of cards. Do we need all of them, is my question. And for those that just need general supplies, we can procure those, is my thought. So any issue with me bringing that forward to go through a procurement with, I'll give specific language about the document?
No.
Okay. Any comment from the public, since I wanted to make sure I gave that? No? Okay. That was it. Sorry for doing it out of order. Now we're on District 3.
Okay. So meetings last week, I
Okay, so meetings last week, I attended the US 95 Open House in Sagel last Wednesday night. I'm sure many of you probably did too. I was kind of set back at the huge freeway that they're planning on putting through there. But one of my ideas, and I'm sure many of yours, was we don't quite understand why they're wanting to do all this work and still not addressing the bridge. The bridge right now is an issue, there's many times the bridge is shut down due to an accident. We can't get first responders or emergency vehicles through there. It seems to me like that would be like a number one priority to maybe move the bridge into a four-lane bridge and then start dealing with the rest of it going through Sagel, but I'm just a commissioner. Also on Saturday, I attended the CERT graduation ceremony. They're supporting efforts and volunteering for our community. This program is actually operated under our Bonner County Emergency Management, and they learn how to help the community in time of need as far as communications or first aid, minor first response type of things. So I'm very glad to see the volunteer people out there wanting to help with their community. Events attended, community events, Bonner County Republican Women's Group meets on the third Tuesday of each month for lunch, which was last Wednesday, and they usually have a speaker or a guest. So if you've got the lunch hour, I would highly recommend going down and participating in that. Also, the third Tuesday of each month is the Bonner County Republican Central Committee meeting, and that's at the Ponderay Event Center starting at 6:30 p.m., if anyone's interested in getting involved with your local Republican Party. And then on Saturday evening, I attended the Life Choices fundraiser. And what they do is they provide support and education for those facing the unintended pregnancies, abortion, sexual health, and family life from a biblical perspective. So that was Janine Shepherd, that was here earlier talking about the baby box. That concludes my report.
All right, public comment. Nobody has a thing to say? All right, oh, Doug, oh, Doug Patterson, I said Doug first, Doug Patterson, sorry, he was quick to raise.
Doug Patterson, Bonner County resident for the record. This meeting, the, I'll call it the, the lower right-hand box on our screens of those watching from, participating from home does not have the list of who else is watching and whose hand is raised. It's, it's possible for me to stumble into my, raising my hand by accident or other things. So if, if you would go back to putting the list of people that are watching from home down there on our screens that were watching at home, that would be nice, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Jennifer.
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident, just a couple of things. Ron, I know you're new, and I appreciate your kind of drilling down into the dollars and asking those questions, I just think that's good. Asia, I really appreciate your auditing and we, I, in my opinion, we really need to get a handle on these credit cards and just expenditures that, people buying furniture and, and I don't understand food for planning and zoning, why that's a requirement? But just, I appreciate the attention to the budget and, you know, how tight it is, and we need to pull the reins in, so I will see you Monday, but I will be late.
Today at 2:00.
Would you like to explain the planning and zoning food?
The commission, that, well, that's, we're talking about the not planning and zoning, it's when they're in the meetings, they get a per diem, and we pay travel for them.
They're volunteers and they come here for four to six hours at night, so we buy them pizza for their time, yeah. Clarify that a little bit.
They're chief non-staff. We'll sometimes let them drink water too. Is there another name on that list, Commissioner Korn?
Nope, oh, Rick was on there, nope.
She spoke for both of them. All right, seeing no more public comment, we will recess. Do you, well, I don't think we need to recess, we're going to go into executive session with your first, even though he's been here watching, so. We're going to end the open meeting and go into our executive session immediately since Lewis Marshall is here.